Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I want to welcome you to the Board of Ed's special meeting today, Thursday, February 15. If you could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Trustee Mitchell? Trustee Middleton?
Present.
Trustee Angenga?
Here.
Trustee Gail?
Here.
Trustee White?
Present.
Trustee Saunders?
Here.
Vipper Kelly? President Kirwin?
Here.
And we have our student trustee, Ms. DeLeon.
Here.
Okay. We have our forum. And so we have some special guests tonight. These are our students who will be traveling to Paris tomorrow. So they will be coming in just to say a few words.
We start here?
Yeah.
Okay. So. My name is Brooke Toomey. I'm the French teacher at Mount Vernon High School, and this is our representation of some of our students coming with us on the trip.
Brooke, excuse me, can you just speak into the mic a little bit? Thank you.
Okay. Oh, that's better. Okay, again, so my name is Brooke Toomey. I'm a French teacher at Mount Vernon High School. I am here with Ms. Anderson Grant. She is one of the chaperones coming on the trip to Paris, and these are some of our lovely students. Not all of us could be here tonight. But I am very, very, very proud to be going on this trip and very grateful to everybody. So thank you first and foremost for all the support that you've given us. Thank you, Ms. Kirwin. Thank you. And to our wonderful students who have been very, they've worked very, very hard to get to this point, and their parents. And so I know that we've all been expressing our gratitude to teachers, schools, families, parents. Thank you all very much. Anything else? Do you want to say anything? Sure.
Good evening, everyone. We would like to thank the parents. A lot of the parents work extremely hard, fundraise. Desiree's mom, we would like to give her a special shout out. She did very well. Oh, and just thank you to the board for giving us this opportunity, your confidence in us, and hopefully this will be our new trip. It's just the beginning. Thank you.
Good evening again. So I just have a brief story to tell. I know when the board approved this trip last year, everyone was so excited. But then when they tried to get it started and tried to collect the funds, they were short on funds. They couldn't get it, the funds raised. And so Brooke called me, and she said, "Ms., Ms. Kirwin, you got to help us, please. We want to go to Paris, but we don't have the money. We don't have the first deposit to make this trip possible." So right away, I went into gear. I went into motion. I called up Dr. Smith, Mr. Silver. I said, "Please, you guys have to make this possible because not only that we educate the students, but we want to have round-routed students, right? We want to have them full, global citizens." So it's very important, for me especially. And so I said, "Dr. Smith, you got to make this possible, please. We need these kids to go." We put a plan in place. I told Brooke, "Listen, the district will make the first deposit, but we have to set up payment plans and have everything in motion." And I'm so happy that you guys are here and you made it happen. The students, the parents, and of course, the teachers who are chaperones, and Dr. Pierce. Every month, I would check in with them. Are you guys on target? Are you guys on target? But they truly, truly came through. And tonight, I want to give you guys each a care package to travel with. And so before I do, I turn the mic over to Dr. Smith.
The only thing I could say really in French is "we." But Paris is a beautiful place. I've been there a few times. They call it a walk-in. It has lights and walk-walks. You have to see the Louvre Museum, the Louvre machine. You know, one of the things, they say that we're not polite in that we expect everyone to speak English, and Paris, they expect you to speak French. So I remember going to Paris and having my little dictionary. And I was in my hotel, and I needed some towels. I went downstairs, and I said, "I need towels." They didn't pay me any attention. I went up to my dictionary. I said, "Sauvetez." They said, "One moment." But it is a very friendly place in that when you travel, the subways take you exactly where you want to go. And I think it's a beautiful place. You cannot deny the intricate designs. You look at the buildings and you wonder, "How was that possible?" You go into the museums and you look at the artwork. It's beautiful. But one of the things, we're giving you a gift, but we want you to say something to us in French and tell us exactly what it means. Do you have any volunteers? Oh, he could try. Come on.
Bonjour. Moi, je m'appelle Toco. It means myself, my name is Toco. Okay, okay. Comment tu t'appelles? I mean, no, 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 I mean. Je suis seizeze. It means like sixteen years old, like I'm sixteen years old. Je suis seizeze. What's next? I'm thinking of the words. Ooh, man, this, yeah, I'm so excited. I cannot talk. Okay, that's right. Okay, let me just think of the last one. How can I say? How do you say it? Bonjour, je m'appelle Clarence. Ah, let's see. J'aime faire du shopping at jouer, jouer vidéo. It means I like to go shopping and play video games.
Thank you so much. Sorry for putting you on the spot. I just had to do that. But enjoy yourself, have a great time, but please be safe and listen to your chaperones. We want you all to come back safe, healthy, happy, and share your stories, okay? I love hugs too.
And the ones who aren't here, I can.
All the best. Thank you so much.
We are going to take you on a trip, have a trip, take lots of pictures. Yeah.
I didn't give my hugs to everyone. Of course.
Merci encore. Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much. Okay. Oh, over this way. Okay.
I do. I want to be responsible for a lot. I just want to say stuff and keep it moving.
Okay, we're going to go on to public comments. There is no legal requirement to recognize public comments at the Board of Education. However, the Board recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of the board policy. Please state your name, address, and organization, if any, you represent. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person at 165 North Columbus Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York, by phone at 914-665-5235, or by email. The Board welcomes all respectful comments, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, other Mount Vernon education official, or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks. Our first speaker tonight is Len Sauer.
Good evening, Board. My name's Len Sauer. I want to speak tonight on virtue signaling, which is apparently to make a person feel good by applying today's standards of morality on incidents that happened years ago to make them appear to be better people. Example, in France, they had the guillotine 150 years ago. Our people do not have to fear that the guillotine is still in present use. The canceling, though, of Christopher Columbus was an example, to me, of virtue signaling, and it offended a great number of members in the community who respect and revere him. His actions in some cases were wrong in today's environment, but must be viewed in the time they were done. Bill Maher said that all people did bad things in that period. Those actions do not negate the fact that his courage, bravery, and skill crossing an uncharted ocean with three small ships and discovering a new world deserves to be celebrated. By your canceling of Christopher Columbus, you've insulted many members of this community, especially but not limited to the Italian-Americans. The superintendent has complained that taxes have not been raised in years and the students have suffered. You may not receive as much state aid as you have in the past, yet you insult voters who will be voting on your presented budget. In a period where you have an overwhelming problem in Mount Vernon with students with special need, a district being investigated by a federal government for malfeasance, a district in need of additional maintenance, a district that has lost its assistant superintendent for finance, a district competing with charter schools which perform as well or better than Mount Vernon at half the cost, a district with the poorest academic performance unfortunately in the county, and also one that the Mount Vernon Federation of Teachers is looking for additional funds. You have unnecessarily done more damage to the community by canceling Christopher Columbus. What you can do will take courage, but not nearly as much as Columbus, is to reinstate Columbus to his rightful place in history and acknowledge and celebrate his discovery by celebrating his holiday on the school calendar. Also, please remember that repairing a district is not just relocating desk chairs on the Titanic. You have to make hard policy decisions, have to be a good, strong board member with passion and vision to protect the district and the community. I mean, I've been there. I know the situation. I urge you to do that to restore Christopher Columbus. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Cynthia Crenshaw?
Good evening, Cynthia Crenshaw. I wish charter schools was here to see what just took place with our kids going to Paris so they could see where we put our resources. But anyway, I would like to ask the board, after one year, one year of the superintendent's position, paying over a million dollars plus an additional eight thousand, nine thousand each month, why would you hire a lawyer after one year now to represent this other superintendent, I guess? Now, the company that you have now, the lawyers that you have now, shouldn't they know that right out the gate, at least in, when does that happen, February, at least in March or April? Is the company that is representing us incompetent or what? We talking about how stressed our community is with money? We have two people on one position making over half a million dollars, and then on top of that, you goes and hire a lawyer? And I understand that this lawyer that you hired is a family member of one of the board members. That's not a conflict of interest? What are you doing with our money? One year, one year, and now you decide you need another lawyer to come in here, paying him a six-figure salary when we can't even give our teachers a contract or raise? What are you doing with our money? And is there anything in sight that we will be having, that we will be looking for a superintendent, or will we be letting one of them go? If the one that's home, if you don't have anything on her, bring her back. If you do have something on her, let her go, and let's go with the Kirwin superintendent. It's either one or the other. Stop spending our money. After one year, this lawyer firm says he cannot represent her. He did not know this from the beginning? Come on, think about that. Why are you milking these taxpayers? Can you answer any of these questions tonight? Why wait a whole year after paying a half a million dollars or more? If the person that's home, you don't have anything on, bring her back. If you do, let her go and hire a superintendent and start doing a superintendent search. Stop milking us and give these teachers what they are due. They are the backbone of this community. They raise our children. They raise our children to be lawyers, superintendent, mayor, whatever. Give them their due. Stop spending our money, and let's look for a superintendent and stop spending this half a million dollars plus. Thank you.
Brenda Miles? Brenda Miles? Keith McCall?
Good evening, School Board Superintendent, Mount Vernon Community. My name is Keith McCall, and I'm the president of the Mount Vernon Federation of Teachers. The last time I was up here, I mentioned a fact, and that fact is the following. The teachers, the teaching assistants, and the security monitors are the single biggest factor in determining student success, and everyone agreed with that. Examples of what our teachers do. If you're a teacher, or TA, or security monitor, and you have spent extra time with children, helping them outside of your contractual responsibility, raise your hand. See all the hands that went up? If you have gone above and beyond by purchasing additional supplies for students out of your own pocket, raise your hand. These are examples of things that the MVFT unit members do. Let me give you a couple of stats. Currently, approximately forty percent of our teachers have not received a salary increase this past year. The reason? We don't have a settled contract. For teaching assistants, it's approximately forty-eight percent. The reason being? No settled contract. And for security monitors, it's approximately forty-two percent. Reason being? No collective bargaining agreement. Now, make no mistake about it, we know our value to this school district. However, our value needs to be validated, and the only way to validate that is by settling a new collective bargaining agreement. So once again, I stand before you to say the following. We need what's fair and what is equitable, and I'm talking to the board right now. You need to put pressure on our acting superintendent to make sure that this gets done. You also need to put pressure on the members of your negotiating team that you have in the room to make sure that this happens. Thank you for your time and attention.
Ellen Hanny?
Ellen Hanny? Good evening. Good evening to everyone on the board, the Mount Vernon community, and to my fellow MVFT members that are here with me tonight. A little short. My name is Ellen Hanny Salagumba. I'm a teacher at Trapaken School in a union rep. I'm also a proud product of the Mount Vernon school system, born and raised here in Mount Vernon, as are many of my colleagues. I can tell you the name of every single teacher that I had growing up and the impact that they had on me. I hope. No, I know that I have had a positive impact on every student that I have taught in my thirty-two years of teaching, twenty-five of which were in this district. The educators in our school come to school, in our district come to school every day with a smile on their face and give a hundred and ten percent to our children despite having no settled contract. We take on multiple roles every day as we work with our children because that's what they are. Our students are our children, and they deserve nothing less than a hundred and ten percent of us. We are mentors, mediators, a source of comfort and support. We are facilitators, organizers, data collectors, nurses, collaborators, coaches, comedians on occasion, and so much more. It is not a career. It is a labor of love, a calling, a life choice that doesn't end at 3:10 every day. We take home work with us at night. We often help our own children, writing our lesson plans at the same time. We plan lessons over the weekends and holidays, and return to school often for conferences, shows, and special events that are outside of our contract hours. We have gone almost two years now without settling a new contract. We need one that is fair and comparable to our surrounding districts. How can we expect to retain experienced educators or attract new talent to our district? If I were to go to a neighboring district with my credentials, my years of experience, my education, I could expect to earn up to nineteen thousand dollars more in another district. It's staggering. And I have the numbers. I've seen the contracts from the other districts. I've done the research, and as you have all experienced, the cost of living has gone up eight percent this year, and that has put quite a dent in our pockets. Personally, the maintenance in my apartment building where I live has gone up almost eight percent every year too. It's increasing. It's in addition to the mortgage, the maintenance, and a family to feed and support. And I ask you to think about these numbers as I remind you that all of the MVFT members in this district, all that they do, and see if you can justify why we should deserve anything less than a fair and equitable contract. Your children deserve experienced and talented educators, and educators deserve a fair and equitable contract. Thank you.
That ends our public comments. Go on to superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Yesterday was my one-year anniversary as the acting superintendent. I would like to thank the board trustees for affording me this opportunity. I would like to thank all the staff for doing their due diligence, serving our scholars, and working towards our mission. I would also like to talk about the New York State testing. We presented the New York State education testing results from 2023 school year for grades three to eight at our last board meeting. Some concerns were highlighted following the presentation. While these numbers improved in the past year, I understand that there is room for further improvement. As we return to full in-person learning in 2122, the effects of the pandemic and remote learning were made apparent. The numbers from that year were used as a baseline to determine where the students in our district were and where we needed to focus strategies to improve our outcomes. As Dr. Doggett mentioned in his presentation, these numbers helped us determine the direction we needed to go to pave the road to progress. In reviewing the 2122 data, the district started developing plans to improve English Language Arts and Math scores. Tools such as iReady are being used to help the district evaluate students and teachers. Also, we have put a focus on getting back to the basics in terms of how we approach teaching strategies. From 2122 to 2223, the district had a proficiency rate increase of three percent in English Language Arts and fifteen percent proficiency rate increase in math. Both of these met our goals of a three percent improvement. This is testament to our focus on mathematics, as all schools had an improved score in that subject. In looking at each school's data, it is also important to consider other factors, including programming, new students' testing grades, school performance, vacancy, proficient students leaving the district, and opt-outs. Even schools that do not seem to have improved as much still made great progress. Edward Williams, Mandela, were targeted schools for improvement. They were pre-TSI schools with an immediate plan to reduce Level One results. As a result, both schools are now in good standing. To continue... To continue improving in English Language Arts, we are utilizing the Foundation software for K-3. We are rigorously analyzing our data for all K-8, and we use the information to make decisions about instruction and intervention. Several of the methods that are being utilized are small group instruction, tiers of invention, and progress monitoring, transitioning younger students to iReady platform, and improving targeted support for Levels Ones and Two students. The district will continue to analyze data and our educational strategies to provide the best education to our students, but I assure you that we are already making considerable progress. I would like to call Dr. Jones up. She will be presenting about Title I.
Good afternoon, Board of Trustees. Good afternoon, Mount Vernon community. Good afternoon, the secret sauce of the district, the teachers, and good afternoon everyone else. Tonight, I will be presenting to you the 2324 Title I presentation. This is a requirement from the state, and so I'm a little bit taller than everybody else. Can I take it out? Okay. Because I feel like I'm going to have to buy a neck brace afterwards. Can you hear me now? Okay. So, ooh, that's loud. So here is what... Is it me? I really know how to clear a room. So, tonight, we will look at our Every Student Succeed Act. What is Title I? We will be looking at the funding allocations, and we'll be looking at the annual review of district parent and family engagement policy, and then we will be looking at the district parent liaisons, who they did present a few weeks ago. They are a part of this Title I grant as well, funds as well, and we'll be looking at the NYSED complaint procedures. And at the end, if there are any questions and answers, I will present my email for anyone to send me those questions. Okay? Okay. So, what is Every Student Succeeds Act? All right, it's over there. So, I'm not going to stand here and read everything to you guys, but this is the federal law that includes requirements for schools, local education agencies, and that includes our district, accountability, school improvement, and the educator development and student support. All right? And this PowerPoint can be found on our district website, just in case I'm going a little bit too fast and skipping anything. So, ESSA is all about equity. Equity for the students, equity for the teachers, equity for everything that we do here in district. It requires school-level improvement plans for the schools with the lowest performance for certain student population. And New York State is committed to ensuring that all students succeed in school, no matter who they are, where they live, where they go to school, or where they come from. All right? As I said before, ESSA is all about equity. Equity for the educators. It is our responsibility to provide them with the strategies to build their capacity so that they can perform, improve their instructional delivery. It's about making sure our school buildings are places where students can learn and thrive. It's about creating access to our students. So, there are multiple measures of success that's required of us. Student growth is one of them. Academic progress is one of them. Graduation rate, English language proficiency, and the chronic absenteeism that we have to check, and making sure all our students are college and career and civic ready. So now, let's look at Title I. Title I is a federal grant program designed to give educational assistance to students living in areas of high poverty. The Title I program originated in nineteen sixty-five and provide the funding for additional support, supplemental support, to aid our programs in our district to make sure we provide a quality education for all our scholars. I'm sorry, I don't know. No, no, okay. So, the purpose of the allocation is to ensure that all children have fair, equal, and significant opportunity to obtain high-quality education and reach at a maximum, a minimum proficiency and challenging state academic achievement standards and assessments. So, we are eligible for this funding because this is a federal allocation and it's made to New York State based on poverty data from the US Census. New York State Ed allocates grants, subgrants, to local educational agencies based upon federal allocations and other adjustments. Local educational agency makes school-level allocations using a per student for low-income students. Should I wear my glasses? All right. So, Title I for targeted districts, comprehensive support and improvement for schools, CSI schools, we no longer have a CSI school in our buildings, targeted support and improvement for those two schools that Dr. Smith mentioned, we no longer have them because now we're all schools in good standing. But however, this is how we qualify for these funds. So, our funding, Title I, targeted districts identified for 2324 school year will receive the following allocations. The targeted district will receive fifty thousand dollars as a district. Comprehensive support and improvement schools, those are CSI schools, so two hundred and twenty-five thousand per school, and targeted school and improvement, that's our TSI schools, and that's seventy-five thousand dollars per schools. All right. So, once we got that funding, every single school in our district gets a piece of the pie, and this is determined, as our Title I funding for schools, is determined by the population of each school. And as you can see on the board, those are the amounts that have been allocated to the buildings to use for parent and family engagement. Okay? So, the use of this fund, what are we using these funds for? Whatever we use it for must directly impact students' achievement. We are providing additional services that increase the amount and quality of instructional time. We are increasing the amount for providing students with an enriched and accelerated academic program, significantly elevating the quality of instruction, and affording parents substantial and meaningful opportunities to participate in the education of their children, hence all the math nights, the ELA nights, all the other activities that we do have. Fund supplementary programs, like a part of the funding goes to our after-school program. Fund supplementary materials and stuff, staff in our after-school program, and materials for our after-school program, and fund programs and services that specifically support students with the greatest academic needs. Again, it's still moving on. We use the Title I funds and things that are affordable, reasonable, and necessary. All right. So, what are some allowable activities? So, Title I school improvements, funds may not be used for any school-level activities in non-Title I schools. So, districts must target funds towards the areas of identification and subgroups identified for improvement. Funds may only be used for activities allowed on the Title I and must be used for required improvement activities listed below. And there we have the list. So, participating in the diagnostic tool for school and district effectiveness, participation in training for, training and development of the district comprehensive improvement plan, review of qualifications of CSI and TSI school leaders, and work with independent evaluators to monitor and evaluate fidelity of program implementation. Some other activities, submission quarterly of lead, I'm sorry, of leading indicators required reported to state, provision of two hundred hours of extended learning time, funding and sustaining or implementing a whole-school reform model in a CSI school or TSI school, funding to implement a community school model or advanced coursework CTE program in a CSI or TSI school, funding to support implementation of local assistance plans in Title I schools, and partnerships with institutions of higher education. Those are what is allowed, and the policy that governs annual review of the district parent and family engagement policy is policy number three-one-seven-zero, and this can be found on our website. So, if you visit our Mount Vernon City School website, click on our district, click on the Board of Education, click on the board policies, and in the search button, you can type in or enter policy number three-one-seven-zero. The revised policy was approved September fifteen, twenty twenty. All right. So, our parent liaisons, they do come under the Title I funding, and these are the individuals they presented to you a few board meetings back, and they're listed there along with the schools that they're currently working in. Give you a little time, just in case you don't know who they are. Okay? And parents who have complaints should follow the procedure as indicated by New York State Ed Department. The link is there. If you have questions about Title I and the ESSA funds, please feel free to leave a message. Please send me an email, and my email address is listed up there, bjones@mtvernancsdd.org. I thank you for your time. Good night.
Does anyone have any questions for Dr. Jones? Thank you, Dr. Jones.
You're welcome.
That ends my superintendent report.
And then move on to committee reports. Okay, we start committee reports. We start with trustee Gale.
Yeah, nothing yet.
Okay. Trustee Middleton. Committee reports.
I want to say good evening to everybody. There are five powerful words that are relevant where they may be, and they are, "We reap what we sow." Love to give a quote when I start off. And I just want to say tonight that we had a parent liaison meeting at the high school not long ago, and basically, I want to say kudos to Dr. Jones and the wonderful job she's doing with the parent liaisons. It was a great, awesome meeting, and that is the one committee that I do love and that I do see, where we're able to connect and engage the community, and where we're able to engage our students and our parents alike. So, I want to say kudos to Dr. Jones and to all the parent liaisons. It was great to go on the twelfth Parent Involvement Day, and I went to Rebecca Turner School, Alternative School, where I had a great visit, watched the students engage with the SNUG program, and watched them engage with the students, and to give pertinent information that was necessary, went downstairs to the pre-K, which was wonderful engaging with those students, watching them have a great time with the firefighters, showing them what to do in case there is a fire, giving them hats, and all going outside, pulling the bell on the fire truck. So, it was good communicating with parents and just taking pictures and just having an awesome time. Want to say kudos to Mr. Newby and to his team that put together a very good day with those parents. They went to Parker School, and I want to say kudos to the parent, to the PTA, and to the parent liaison, too, at Rebecca Turner. Can't leave them out. And the parent liaison was right there to greet me and others that came in when we were at Parker's, went to Parker School, and I was glad to be able to see student government sitting there welcoming people coming in, parents coming with Cynthia Crenshaw and a couple of teachers, and it was great to see Devonte and Cody, and even Principal Jacqueline Green, who was proud about the bag that they gave me that they created the mascot with. So, it was positive. It was great. And I want to say kudos to Principal Green, and kudos to Assistant Principal Gray, and definitely to Ms. Crenshaw and to the PTA and the liaison again. Went to Graham School and had a great time there. Great lunch, helped them out, feed the parents, engaged the parents and the students, and to Dr. McGregor, we just had a wonderful time, and the parent liaison, yes, of course, Ms. Graham, and that was great, too, dialogue and all. So, I want to give shout-outs to all three of those schools, and definitely to Dr. McGregor, to the parent liaisons, to the PTA, and everybody that was engaged in cooking the hotcakes. We just had an awesome time, and it was just wonderful, all three visitations. My allegiance is to every school in this district. It is. And so, I just want to say those three that I did visit had a great visitation, and I just want to shout them out.
Okay, as we move along, thank you. Trustee Jenga?
Okay. I also, too, was out at Parent Day. I went to Hamilton School, and I met with PTA President Lyons, who we've become very close, and they keep me abreast over there, and I did not know, but I found out that our new city council, Jayvon Boxdale, his daughter goes there, she's there in kindergarten, so that was pretty fun to meet up with them. After that, I came over to the Honor Academy. I always want to call it Home, so I'm sorry. The drum line was excellent. I met with Ms. Morrow. It was just, all in all, a good day, and they gave me a list of things to do. I also have just a few pamphlets and flyers, so it was overall a very good day.
Thank you. Trustee Sanders?
Monday, February twelfth, trustee Jenga and myself had Zoom meeting with Ms. McKinney Bromley, the Director of Special Ed, and we discussed the April twenty-ninth, we discussed the April twenty-ninth Autism Awareness Day. So, on April twenty-ninth- April 29th Autism Awareness Day. So on April 29th, there's autism, it's a Monday, April 29th, Autism Awareness Day from 3:30 to 6:00. It'll be at Trappagian. The, the committee is trying to see if they can get a bus to transport parents from their other schools, from other schools to Trappagian, because last year it was at Homes. So there's a problem with parking and everything over there. We also discussed sneaker ball. Ms. Bromley's going to give me updates on that, and that's all I have. Oh, also, there's autism awareness t-shirts on sale now, and the proceeds will go towards autism awareness acceptance events on the 29th, so please see your flyer, if not ask your principal for that information. Trustee Mitchell and I had a meeting with Gary O'Grady from the Food Service Amer- Amer- Armark. We discussed dinner. There will be a test of dinner at the three schools, Lincoln, Williams, and Parker, so we're waiting on that, and that's going to start March 6th. Okay, and also President Kirwin. So that's all I have right now. Thank you.
They're serving dinner.
It's going to be a pilot at those three schools starting in March. It's just a rollout pilot, so we'll see how that goes.
Yes, so for the after-school program, three schools, they're going to be rolling out dinner for three schools starting in March, and they are going to be Parker, Williams, and, and Grimes?
Lincoln.
And Lincoln?
And Lincoln.
Okay. And then, you know, as, hopefully it will be successful, then we will have it district-wide for after-school. Okay. Trustee White?
First of all, I would like to thank the facility staff that are working so hard to keep our students safe in each building. Some of the things they've been doing just this past week, my, my glasses, clean and fireproof curdies at William and Parker School. Grimes' fire alarm is fixed. Mandela's fire alarm is fixed. We had to re-inspect fire inspection at Homes, Board of Ed, Trappagian, Pennington, Lincoln, Steen, Dingell, Hamilton, and Rebecca Turner. They all had to be re-inspected to make sure that everything was at, at par. They started painting the first and third floor hallways at Grimes School. These are all in-house, which is saving us a bunch of money, and we also had to, they started to refurbish all bathrooms and all bathroom fixtures, sorry, at the boy JV locker room at Mount Vernon High School. So these are in-house, saving us a bunch of money, but I give them kudos every time I see them or talk to them, because they are trying to sit. Now we save us money, but make our buildings safe.
Thank you so much. Trustee Hannah?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
At the moment, the high school is working on senior trip. We're sending out permission slips, and we're also discussing the details that are regarding prom and our theme, so we're just trying to figure out that now. I also want to show appreciation for my teachers, because some of them were here tonight, and I would just like to say that without them, I would have been able to, I would have been able to get through most of the hardships that we go through in high school, and they do so much for us outside of school, inside of school. I count on my teachers every day, and I appreciate them deeply, and I think that they deserve so much better. And yeah.
That's good. That's good.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So I would like to announce that trustee Mark Lindsay has resigned from the board. He resigned last, on the 8th, last Thursday, I think. So as of right now, the board has a vacancy for a board member. We will be taking bios. We will be starting our interview process hopefully next week to see if we could potentially fill the position for a new board trustee. So Mark Lindsay is no longer with us. We wish him all the best in his future endeavors.
I have a question. What would be the process in the selection of that seat being fulfilled?
Interviews. So we will be having interviews.
Is that inside from those who had already ran for seats or outside? How?
Anyone who is interested will send our district clerk their bios, and then we will be going over the bios, and then each, you know, the board members will be interviewing, whether they ran for election or they're new. We will be, you know, giving everyone the opportunity to apply for the position.
So what is the interview predicated on? What are you looking for? What are you?
So that we will be discussing in executive tonight. Thank you. Okay, so I go right into, I'm sorry, do you have a?
I know, I was just what I wanted to ask what the requirements were to become a board member, but you already explained when you asked around.
Yes. Thank you. Okay. Once you would, how you become a board member? So once you are a resident of Mount Vernon?
For 30.
You are, you are, you are qualified.
30 days.
I'm sorry?
30 days.
And, and at least 18, you have to be 18 years old, yes? And once you're a resident at least for 30 days and more, you, you know, you could apply for that position. Anyone could apply for that position. As I said, it's not just for anyone who ran for election. It could be anyone in the community who think that they're qualified, they would be a great fit for the board. We encourage everyone to apply. Thank you. I just want to also share with everyone that Dr. Smith and I met with Assemblyman Pretlow, was it two weeks ago or last week, where we discuss, we met with Assemblyman Pretlow along with our neighboring administrators. We really hammered at him the fiscal stress that the district is going through, and especially that Governor Hochul had announced that the school district will be getting a shortage of $2.9 million for, from our finance, foundation aid. Just imagine that the shortage and the, the impact that it would have on our school budget. So we really were advocating for that money from Assemblyman Pretlow. He did say that he, we walked away with a sense of confidence that he will also see, seek that money and see, see that that money would not be cut from our foundation aid. Also, Dr. Smith and some of the administrators and I will be going up to Albany, where we will be lobbying for money for the school district. We will be leaving on the 26th. We'll be there for the 27th and the 28th of February. That will be next week. So we are hoping to have everyone's ears when we get there, and so we could get more money than what we do have now, especially with the cut of the 2.9. It's, it's most of, you know, it almost seems like they're setting us up to fail. They cutting foundation aid, and they tell us that we're on the fiscal stress list. So, I mean, we really can't, Mount Vernon can't really catch a break. As far as the Budget Committee, we also met, the Budget Committee met, where we discussed balancing the budget for our upcoming school year. We also spoke about the shortage, again, the $2.9 million that, you know, that, that's going to be, be cut from the school district. When I said hopefully it won't be cut, I hate to use that word, but even though it was announced in Governor Hochul's report. We also spoke about the Teachers Incentive Program that the board will be approving tonight, so we get that rollout to the teachers who wants to retire. There are incentive that we will be extending to those teachers, to those individuals that would like to retire. We met with also the city, the comptroller, corporate council, our attorneys, external attorneys, where we were discussing the taxes owed to the school district, and there are some, I would say, some process that needs to get ironed out, only because the city's supposed to see what the school district, what taxes, all taxes, especially all taxes that the school district is collecting, and for some reason there is a glitch in the system. So they'll be working with, the IT from the school district will be working with the city to hopefully get that straightened out. And that's all I have for our committee report from the Budget Section. Is, anyone else have anything that they want to add? No? Okay. Thank you so much. Do we have any old, do we have any old business?
Can I get an update on, on the cameras? Update on, any updates on the cameras, where we are with that?
Everybody's here as well. Nobody's going, okay. Do we have anything else for old business? No? Okay, we're going to go on to our resolutions. We have a motion for 5.1, Authorization to Establish a Second Position for Budget Analyst. Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
Let everybody speak, huh?
Have a motion for 5.2, Human Resources 99A Certified. Motion? Second. Questions, concerns, discussions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 5.3, Human Resources Resolution 99B Classified. Motion?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.1, Approval of Compensation for Principals and Administrators on the Annual District Professional Performance Review, which is the APPR Negotiations Committee.
Motion?
Second.
Was that you, first one?
Whoa, whoa.
Okay. Who, who's second?
He's second.
First, and you first. Okay. Questions, concerns, discussions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 6.2, Authorization to Approve Denzel Washington School of the Arts Senior Graduation Trip to Virginia Beach.
Motion? Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.1, Authorization to Enter into a Contract with RBO Staffing, Inc. to Provide Services to the CTE Department.
Motion? Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 7.2, Authorization to Amend Resolution for Authorization and Hiring of Staff to Produce the Stage Musical Annie Junior at Denzel Washington School of the Arts from the, from the January 10th, 2024 Board Meeting.
Motion?
Questions, concerns, discussions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.1, Appointment of Impartial Hearing Officer, Case Number 6222333.
Motion?
Need a sec? Questions, concerns, discussions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 8.2, Approval of Student Services Pupil Personnel Services Memorandum Number 13, Dated February 13, 2024.
Motion? Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 9.1, Certification of Uncollected Taxes Taxes for the 2324 Tax Rule.
Motion?
Can I have a, can I have a second?
I'll second.
Questions, concerns, discussions.
So I have, Mr. Silver's not here.
Not here, and go ahead.
We certifying this tax rule. This is so they can pay us back taxes? What, what does this represent? Can you explain it?
I think it's just the taxes that we receive.
Just so the public can know.
I think it's a letter is just to accept the taxes that we receive for the current, whatever year is referenced there.
Current year. It's not for next year.
I think it's a formality.
Okay.
They just don't, you know, receive the taxes and don't let City Hall know what's going on.
Okay. Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Have a motion for 9.2, Authorization to Approve Change Order Increase for Purchase Order Number 240573 for Compin, Inc.
Motion?
I need a second? Questions, concerns, discussions?
I have a question, but I don't know if anyone's here to explain all these change orders. I do too. Is Mr. Ramandi?
Okay, so basically in terms of the change order, you know, we're coming towards the end of balancing our budget as before Ken's departure. So basically, we did pretty good in terms of closing out this year, but money has to be changed in order for us to balance the budgets.
So these are all POs, these three are all POs from like 2023, right? The invoices are all?
So unfortunately, since our contracts don't indicate that people have to send us their bills within a certain or specified time, we receive them a year later, two years later, and we're still required to pay them.
But the, the POs are increase of money, all of them. So they're increased, so do we can, do we know the work's been done? Has anybody, like, you know? Can we confirm that?
You set up a purchase order for a particular service, then it's just like an estimate. Then you deem that you need more funds so that you can pay once you do a bid or you, you know, services more than what you set up. So you need to move the funds into that from with, from other areas that funds were available. So it's just basically purchases set up for $20,000, and you realize you have to pay $50,000, so you have to do a transfer. It's a normal course of business to move money from one account It's a normal course of business to move money from one account to the other.
No, not talking about the transfer. I'm talking about the change orders.
The change order is really increasing the PO because the PO doesn't have enough to support whatever payment needs to be done.
So was there backup that they did?
I'm not sure about the specific about what is referenced there, but I'm just going to give you a broad understanding of, you know, what a change is down there.
I just really wanted to know what they, what did they do to cause a change order in, in these things? And I know you didn't.
No, I understand, but it's not abnormal to have a change order.
Can we pull this?
On that specific? Yeah?
Is, Mr. Ramandi can explain this, right?
Maybe.
Okay.
Just pull him until we get an answer.
I'd like to. I'm nervous about change orders. I just want to make sure. You know, whatever, what they're saying they increasing, we want to see whatever backup.
Okay, so then we'll pull this resolution until we could get the explanation?
Three and four.
Okay.
Change orders two, three, and four.
Cave motion to pull 9.2.
Motion.
9.2 is fine.
No, it's not.
It's a change. All of them are change orders, two, three, and four.
Two, three, and four.
Okay, so motion to pull 9.2?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries to pull 9.2. Cave motion to pull 9.3.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Carries to pull 9.3. Cave motion to pull 9.4.
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries to pull 9.4. Cave motion for 9.5, approved general funds transfers 2023, 2024, dated February 15th, 2024.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Can we get an explanation for that, 9.5?
She was just saying that funds transferred, the funds transferred to pay the POs.
All right.
So we put the money there, but we just need to see why.
Yeah, thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave motion for 9.6, approve the settlement tax proceedings for Westchester Plaza Holdings LLC.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave motion for 9.7, approve the settlement tax proceedings for Verizon New York, Inc.
Motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain?
Abstain.
Motion carries. Cave motion for 9.8, authorization to participate in the New York Class Corporation Program.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave motion for 9.9, accept a donation for girls' flag football team.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave motion for 9.10, approval for merged athletics activities with Toccooah High School, 2024, 2025.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions?
Question. I know they, we did volleyball with them. Is it still only volleyball or do they add another sport?
Tennis.
Boys.
Yeah. Bossy tennis.
Oh, okay. Something else from Toccooah, that's great.
Help them.
Yeah, we're helping them truly. But it's good.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave motion for 10.1, authorization to award bid number 23-24-25 to BSN Sports.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave motion for 11.1, authorization, authorize an employment agreement with Sandra Mike as Assistant Superintendent for Business.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries.
I would like to congratulate Sandra Mike. She is our new Assistant Superintendent Business. And you can come up to the table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cave motion for 11.2, authorization to enter into a contract agreement with Amanda Plummer as school food, food services manager.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave motion for 11.3, approval of consult agreement with Alan Gonzalez as substitute school administrator.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave motion for 11.4, authorize an agreement by and between the Mount Vernon City School District and the Federation of Teachers Retirement Incentive Program.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave motion for 12.1, appointment of school election inspectors for the May 21st, 2024 election.
Motion.
Second.
Questions, concerns, discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? Motion carries. Cave motion for 13.1, authorization to enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation, financial history of a particular person or corporation, or matters leading to the appointment, employment, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation, and to receive legal advice on pending matters.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are we coming back? We all? No. Thank you.
Are we finished?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, I want to say we will not be coming back from executive session. So I want to wish everyone a good night and get home safely. Thank you so much for coming out to join us. Good night. Have a good night.
Will they have break next week?
Yeah.